With this, I want to say welcome to tonight's meeting of the Saginaw City Council. And I'll lead the pledge and the prayer. No, I think Michael was going to.
Go right ahead.
All right, all right. To start the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, as we gather together to conduct the business of the city of Saginaw, please give us the knowledge, the understanding, the courage to do what is necessary to do what is best for the citizens of this city. Please protect all our employees, particularly those who are, put their lives on the line every day as the safety officers of the city. In your name we pray. Amen. Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Forbes is excused. Councilmember Bryant.
Present.
Councilmember Bench is excused. Mayor Pro Tem Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Millen.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Ostache.
Present.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
We have seven members present and two excused.
Thank you. Any announcements?
Just want to let everyone know that the yard waste collection is the same day as your regular trash day. And yard waste materials must be in paper yard waste bags or in a 35 gallon or smaller garbage can, not weigh more than 50 pounds. Must have a yard waste sticker, like this one, affixed to the front of that can. And this sticker is available in the city clerk's office. The city waste convenience station is open to city residents the second Saturday of the month from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. It's at the Public Works Building using the entrance off of Holland Avenue. City residents may dispose of items such as building materials and recycling for cans, plastic containers, and paper. The next collection day will be this Saturday, July 13th. And the stickers are free. Good question. Those are my announcements. Mayor, that takes us to a public hearing.
Before that, I do, as a follow-up to the announcement, I do want to remind everyone that because this is a public meeting, we ask that all members of the audience please remain quiet and refrain from speaking, interrupting, or otherwise disrupting the meeting. Also, it's a good time, I'll remind everyone, to please turn off or silence all electronic devices. Thank you. Now, as far as public hearings, the purpose of a public hearing is for the members of the public to address council as a whole and for council to receive information from the speakers for consideration regarding specific action being requested of us. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject of the public hearing. Please begin by stating your name, address, and your relationship to the subject of the public hearing. The first speaker will be considered the main presenter or designated representative, and you will be allowed 10 minutes to speak. Other speakers will be limited to three minutes. Because public hearings are not question-and-answer sessions, speakers may only ask general questions of councils for council's consideration, not questions directed to individual councilmembers, city staff, or the audience. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Our public hearing this evening is regarding the extension to the urban cooperation agreement with Albee Township to provide water services.
Is there anyone to speak or object to the agreement with Albee Township for water services? Is there anyone to speak to or object? Third and last time, is there anyone to speak to or object? Hearing none, Madam Clerk? Do we need a motion to close the hearing? So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion on closing the meeting of the hearing? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's Carrie.
Thank you, Mayor. That takes us to public input.
Yes, for public input, we want to say welcome to all those who have signed up to address council tonight. Thank you for sharing with us your thoughts and input. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. When called to the podium, please introduce yourself and state your residence address. Let us know if you will be speaking solely for yourself or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk, so be sure to cover your main points first. We ask that your presentation be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching SGTV, and to the council so we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to city staff. Thank you.
Our first speaker tonight is Eric Carbin.
I'm Eric Carbin, living at 1003 Mackinac, speaking solely for myself. On April 29th, 2019, the city manager presented the recommended fiscal year 2020 budget to council. On May 20th, council adopted that budget unanimously without discussion. By state law, council is required to consider the proposed budget before adopting it. Did council meet that requirement? How much careful thought did council members give to the 300-plus pages of the proposed budget document? Did council members each get a copy of the proposed budget document after it was transmitted to council by the manager on April 29th? I don't think so. The director of the OMB said at the start of her presentation on May 6th that a copy of the proposed budget document was available at the city clerk's office. She also said it was "listed" on the city website, but in fact, the proposed budget document wasn't posted on the city website until some 30 days later, after the budget had been adopted. Before starting the budget overviews on May 6th, the manager said that council members could contact his office to make appointments with the OMB office if they had questions about the proposed budget. Did council members go to the clerk's office to examine the proposed budget document or to the Office of Management and Budget to get answers to their questions about the proposed budget? Not that I know of. I suspect that council members limited their consideration of the proposed budget to the presentations in council chambers on May 6th by the director of the OMB, the budget analyst at the OMB, and the director of Public Services, and on May 20th by the Assistant Director of Human Resources. If that was the case, I would suggest that the council members did not properly consider the proposed budget. Maybe there is a special legal definition of "consider" whereby council is deemed to have considered the budget, given the overview presentations and the fact that the proposed budget was put to a vote by council members who adopted it. I don't know of any special legal definition. According to a sensible definition I found in a general dictionary, "consider means to think carefully about, especially in order to make a decision." By this definition, I doubt that the council considered the proposed fiscal year 2020 budget before adopting it.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Annie Dugan.
I have copies for you. Do I have 13 or just 11? Two are missing.
Yeah, I'll take whatever you have.
Well, I'll just give you 11.
Okay.
So that's what's here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Annie Dugan. I reside at 2507 Willard Street. The nature of, my reason for being here tonight relates to the annual business license imposed on my home-based business. It's a small home-based business. When I went to City Hall on Thursday, May 30th, to pay the annual fee, it was about 3:59 p.m., and the door was locked and the staff was preparing to leave, and the clerk's office door had just locked. I returned the next day, less than 24 hours, Friday, May 31st, around 2:30 p.m., and was informed that the annual license fee was $75, which was a 50% increase over the previous year. I went expecting to pay $50 on each property for a total of $100, and paid a total of $150. In addition, I was informed that I owed a late fee of $37.50 that needed to be paid. A 50% increase on two licenses would be another $75 because of being one day late. There was no prior notification of a price increase. An enormous 50% late fee is unreasonable and more in line with the loan sharks and punishment to business owners and should be taken up with the Consumer Protection Bureau. Number one, I would like to know, why do I have to pay twice for one business? It appears to be double-dipping. What category are you placing my business compared to other small businesses and/or home-based businesses? And how do you measure the number of home-based businesses in the city and who is charged for the responsibility of tracking and registering those businesses? I am registered with the Saginaw County Courthouse and have a DBA license which costs $10 every three years. Now, after researching other surrounding communities, most entities in our region don't require a home-based business license, and if so, very minimal cost compared to the city of Saginaw. It appears that the city of Saginaw is not community-friendly toward home-based businesses. Attached is a list of neighboring communities and the cost, if any, for operating a home-based business. And also attached is Page 3 with a listing of neighboring communities and the cost. A copy of my, I also have a cost of my business license because when I read Page 2, that will support, I have my license there to support that. So with reference to my home, I noticed inaccurate information that has been recorded in the Saginaw business license indicating that I am using 2,400 square feet of space in my home. My home has a total of 1,900 square feet.
Excuse me. I apologize for interrupting you, but your three minutes are up.
Oh, really?
Yes. Thank you. You can continue, but not today.
Okay, well, each of you will have a copy.
Thank you.
To digest, but I, I had some questions, so. Do they have, do follow-up, never?
We don't do answer questions today. Anything will be referred to the manager's office.
Yeah, I tried to get a meeting with the manager.
Mayor, our next speaker is Christopher Kubiak.
Mr. Kubiak.
Do not see him coming forward. We'll move on to Diane Clark.
Good evening. My name is Diane Clark, and I live at 2112 Greshad Avenue in the city of Saginaw. I am a member of the Board of Trustees for the Public Libraries of Saginaw, but am not speaking for the board. I am here to give you an update on the renovations that are taking place at Hoyt Library and other events taking place at the Public Libraries of Saginaw. First, the updates on the renovations. When I reported to you last fall, the hope was that the renovations would be completed by December. However, we have all watched enough renovation shows on HGTV to know that there are always glitches. One of the staff noticed water in the basement, and it was determined that the drainage tile in that area needed to be replaced. As the workers were finishing up the roof, one felt the roof give a little. The original rafters in the area had rotted and had to be replaced. It has also been determined that the handicap ramp has to be replaced. The plan is to make a concrete ramp with an ice melt system so it can be used for deliveries as well as a handicap access point. The sandstone pillars at the main entrance are eroding from the salt, and so the steps there will be replaced with the ice melt system in them as well. Brian Regan is the owner of the company, Born a Restoration, the commercial masonry contractor who has been working at Hoyt. He hired a stone carver to make a scaled-down replica of the stone owl that has perched on the library. He also made a display case for it, and it can be seen behind the reference desk at Hoyt. And now for the fun stuff. The summer reading program, A Universe of Stories, is in full swing at all of the libraries, and there's still time to register and earn some great prizes. Children will receive a free book at registration and prizes after reading for five hours and 10 hours. Teens will also receive a free book with prizes after 10 and 20 hours of reading. Adults who read for 25 hours are entered into a drawing to win $50 gift cards and Kindles. There are special events at each of the branches going on all summer long. All you have to do is check the Public Libraries website. Excuse me. With your library card, you can access three digital platforms: RV Digital for magazines, Pupla for books, movies, and shows, and Overdrive for books. Now you can check out library material from the comfort of your home at a time convenient for you. If you need help accessing the digital resources, the library offers a free class for adults on the third Wednesday of each month at Butman Fish. And finally, the Public Libraries of Saginaw won the Stars Grand Prize of a bus wrap, so look for their smiling faces on the side of one of the buses. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Terry Pruitt.
Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is Terry Pruitt, many of you know, and here this evening, representing the NAACP here in Saginaw. And my purpose this evening is to give honor and special thanks to one of your own, Councilwoman Balls. Would you please stand? I want to say to all of you in the public here tonight that Michael is now a life member of the NAACP. I have to apologize to you. I walked out of the house and picked up the wrong plaque, but we'll get it to you tomorrow. I've got four or five of them sitting there, and I thought I had yours on top, and I picked up the wrong one, but you have a very beautiful plaque and a pen, so thank you. It really represents more than just a financial commitment to the organization because that is substantial, but Michael has always demonstrated a very strong moral commitment to the organization and to our mission, so I want to say thank you publicly for your support. Michael is one of the council few people who regularly attends our community meetings. He is always on the phone or questioning me or calling me, asking me about what's going on, and so I do appreciate your involvement and support for the NAACP. Second part of my statement is very simple. We're celebrating our 100th anniversary in this community this year. In fact, in this month, July, the NAACP was founded at Beth La Emi Church in 1919 here in Saginaw. So I want to give you as a commemorative gift from the NAACP, all of the council members and some of the staff, a calendar that we published this year with a lot of historical facts about the accomplishments of the NAACP and African-Americans in this community. You'll find it to be a very factual and very historical document and reference source for you, so thank you. You'll be getting invitations to our Freedom Fund banquet the fourth Sunday in September. All of you, Mr. Mayor, I'm putting you on notice now that we ask you to be there to bring some comments. We'll be asking the council for a, some sort of significant proclamation or tribute to the branch, but we expect about 600 people. We do have a major speaker coming in, and so we do appreciate the support that we have gotten from the city of Saginaw with the NAACP, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just? Give a pitch?
No. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Pruitt.
Our final speaker tonight is David Rosansky.
My name is David Rosansky. I reside at 11714 Weingards East in Utica, Michigan, and tonight I'm representing multiple residents of the city of Saginaw. So I mentioned my name is David Rosansky. I'm CEO of Rosebud Consulting, which offers licensing, compliance, and business advising services for the legal cannabis and hemp industries. The reason I'm here tonight, as I mentioned, is representing multiple residents from the city of Saginaw who are all very interested in bringing jobs and economic growth to their hometown. I understand you are in the process of considering whether or not to opt in and allow your constituents to launch marijuana facilities in the city of Saginaw. My objective tonight is to provide some additional insights. First, many neighboring jurisdictions have opted in or are planning to opt in, which means your citizens will be spending dollars in those jurisdictions that would otherwise be spent within this great city. Second, municipalities have complete discretion over the types of licenses, as I'm sure you know, to issue, as well as how the application itself is designed, which means you folks are able to ensure facility owners are among the best and most honest. State law has stringent safety and security requirements, which result in facilities that are more secure than most commercial or industrial facilities. Property values are positively affected by marijuana facilities nearby. In Denver, there was a jump of 8.4% or around $27,000 for homes within .1 miles of a retail marijuana facility. Legalization is linked to lower crimes and lower use of illicit drugs like opiates, which we know is a current issue that all municipalities are contending with currently. And finally, there are significant economic benefits as a result of marijuana facilities, including jobs and additional tax revenue, even at the local level. These are some of many benefits that adopting a marijuana ordinance and associated facility licenses will bring to the city of Saginaw. I would also like to make myself available as an informational resource. As you're considering opting in, on behalf of myself and the clients I'm representing, we eagerly await your decision regarding this issue. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
With that, Mayor, we are now at remarks of council.
The council members have a three-minute limit for their remarks, and today we begin with Councilmember Scherzer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I first like to say thank you to the speakers, and it's always great to see my friends of the NAACP, and congratulations to Councilwoman Balls for your contribution and your commitment to the NAACP. I do want to say thank you to the council members. The mayor and Councilwoman John Millen attended the food giveaway at CAC on the 28th. We distributed over 15,000 pounds of food to over 400 families. I think it was actually like 503 families, so thank you. It was awesome to see you take charge. I knew you'd come in and just go. But stay tuned, there's more things coming up, and I fully support everyone all the council members are involved with, so I look forward to getting involved even more. It's definitely been a hot few weeks here in Saginaw. Happy 4th of July to everybody, and congratulations, Bob is a born member, Mr. Bob Johnson, to the Saginaw Fireworks Festival Committee. That was a phenomenal show. I went to the Bay City Fireworks too, but I don't think they had any competition, so Saginaw did awesome. It was great to see new things on the island, the food trucks, and just seeing all the kids and the families getting together. It was absolutely wonderful. Just a reminder, there's some amazing things going on almost every day of the week in Saginaw. We have the Lawn Chair Film Festival on Sundays, Jazz in the Garden starting at the Anderson Enrichment Center on Wednesdays. We also have Friday Night Live starting this week. And then also, just kudos to the city staff for getting the Splash Park up and running. It's beautiful, and it's been hot, so those kids have been enjoying it. That is all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Good afternoon. Good evening.
That's you going.
This is money these days. I'd like to thank all of our speakers who came up and spoke, and I'm sure that we will really look into all of the comments that we had. I had the opportunity to go to, you see us all in these shirts. Saginaw is, my thing is, we're poised for a comeback. We are going to be bigger and better, and this is Saginaw building Saginaw. I know the mayor was gonna take it. I took some of your thunder. And basically, we have been busy going back and forth to affairs. Coming up in September, I'm hoping that we all will travel to Detroit, Michigan, where I will become the president of MML. I am currently the president now. I'm just a proxy, which means that I'm over 549 villages and cities and little communities in the state of Michigan. What do I do? I go around and try to help them find some money, but trust and believe, I'm gonna find Saginaw some money first. That's how you do things. Funny. NAACP, you know I'm always, kudo, kudos. The challenge is on. Me and Mayor talked about it. We're looking at getting a table, and so we're asking all of our council people to think about it now. You got September 22nd, so we decide we save $5 a week, we can have our $75 to go to it. It would be nice. Also, I'd like to ask help again from the council. I think we need to be at Friday Night Live to represent so that our citizens can see us, and so we're not looking at this Friday, but we're looking at the-
August 2nd?
August 2nd.
And July 26th.
July 26th. August 2nd, I'll be at the Dunk Tank. So anybody who wanna get their anger on, I'm in the Dunk Tank raising money for pride. So it's gonna be a good time up there. It's hot. Make sure you check on the elderly. These last few hot days has been really, really hot, and I think people sometimes forget that we have seniors in our area, but if you've got some, just knock on the door and check on them and make sure they're not too overly hot. That's all I have to say, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bryant?
All right. Councilwoman Scherzer took some of the things I wanted to say. First of all, thanks to all of our speakers who spoke tonight. I'm sure the manager will get with you. If not, don't hesitate to pick up the phone and give us a call or shoot us an email. Had a birthday since we met last, and spent a good amount of it throughout the city. Thanks to the chief for allowing Officer Jackson and myself to go out. I got 500 popsicles and a couple hundred ice cream sandwiches. We went out to probably six different neighborhoods, and then we stopped at the Splash Park too, so I know that our kids appreciated it. Man, what a great, it was just a great experience to see the diversity just at the Splash Park. It was amazing. We had people that we couldn't even communicate with. We were communicating with them through their grandchildren, so it's just one of the things that we sometimes take for granted, but our community is extremely diverse, and we can take something from each culture that's represented. I want to give kudos to Gary Dawkins in the back from Holton Jones Neighborhood Association for leading the charge over there and cleaning up some of those lots with the help of SBLC, so thank you to SBLC. We'll hear from them in a minute, and thank you so much to Mr. Dawkins in the back. Also had the opportunity to collect donations on the street corners for Saginaw Area Fireworks. And as Councilwoman Scherzer said, great job, Mrs. Johnson, on that committee. It's one of the activities that brings our community together, and I think that's what we need to see mirrored all over the place. We see the river dividing our community. That generational thing has happened for way too long, and the fireworks is one thing that brings everybody right to the city center. So thank you for the work that you guys do. I know it's not easy. It was hot out there collecting that money in them buckets, but it's for a great, great cause. I do want to pass along, I heard from one of the pastors in our community, the pastor of Gideon Christ Community Church, and that would be Pastor Atkins, and they're gonna have a community celebration. It's gonna be a picnic this coming Saturday at 216 South Roosevelt, excuse me, South Roosevelt Austin Avenue. So if you would please stop over there, it begins at 2:00 p.m. And also, kudos to the Mexican-American Council. I stopped over there, Councilman Ostache was there, and just gave a word of encouragement. They're starting a new program with artists, and it was great to talk to them just briefly about how art is incorporated into our community. We think about art and about the different things that we do, but it's a lot more than that. I mean, we have a Pulitzer Prize-winning author from the city of Saginaw, and it was just great to explain to them the different kinds of arts that we have. If you look at our skyline in the city, look at a street sign, everything involves art, and everybody has, they have the duty to give back to their community however they do that. So it was great to just encourage that young cohort of artists that we had, but otherwise, summer's kicking off, and it is, it's hot, we got a lot of events to get to, and there's always something to do, so don't let anybody tell you there's nothing to do in the city of Saginaw, because we're increasing that exponentially. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ross.
Okay, good evening. I just want to reiterate what everybody's saying. Thanks to all of our speakers coming out, because it really is important. You take the time to actually carve that out of your schedule to come and talk to us. A lot of people have been talking about things I was already gonna talk about, but one thing I will mention that's coming up too is they still are having down at the Huntington Event Park, they'll be doing their food truck face-offs. And also Friday Night Live, you can almost always find me down there at Friday Night Live. It's a great event, been going for years, so I look forward to that. I will be missing a couple weekends because I will be out of town, but I do plan on attending, so the dates, I did write them down. I think that would be a good thing for council to get down there so people can talk to us. And that was definitely noticed at the kickoff for the lighting up the city where people just really had a good time and they could get a one-on-one conversation with us. Also, over the last, we also attended, we're wearing these shirts like Councilwoman Brenda Morris mentioned, it was the RRC certification for the city, so that was really big through the MEDC, so I attended that event, it was great, and I want to thank the city staff for helping put that on for everybody. I want to thank the city staff for helping put that on for everybody there that day. There was some really good cookies if you were down there. And also, I had a chance to attend the Delta College Open House, and that's right in my neighborhood in the Cathedral District, so very exciting to see those things happening in downtown. And one of the takeaways I took from that is, a lot of times, the students just don't have the opportunity to get out to the Delta facility, well now this brings the Delta facility to the downtown, where they can take a local Starz bus and get to the facility, so that was really awesome. Later on that day, I attended the SVRC Marketplace, had their one-year anniversary. While I was there at the SVRC, I noticed up on the second floor, they have something that's called the Central Michigan University Resource Center. And it was a very interesting collaboration where people that are in businesses, it's kind of a cowork environment, so if you're doing graphic design, you're renting just a small cubicle space, or then if you need help with something else, you can offer them something down the way. So if anybody's looking to do like a local business, and you're kind of working out of your basement near a coffee shop, for a very low cost over there, you can get a space, and you've got access to all their conference rooms, presentations, TVs, and everything that you need to have even like a small board meeting. So I encourage that, if you want to check into that there, and it's on their website Also, like Councilman Bryant mentioned, I was invited by one of our local artists to the Hispanic event for the local art, for the youth art. Local artist here, Emiliano, Emiliano, I know I was gonna get the wrong Vega, and I've been kind of watching him, and I kind of recognized him one day when I was in a coffee shop. So I was really excited that he invited me to come down that day and just kind of talk to the kids, and I kind of wanted to get finger painting with them, because I kind of missed it from a kid, but maybe I told him, maybe next year I said, do the event again, that'd be great. And that is all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Balls?
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the citizens for coming out to the city council meeting today. You know, this is a place where you get your issues taken care of. And I have a good friend of mine named Mary McDonald, who has an issue with at the grave Forest Lawn Cemetery. I know it's been wet outside, I know we've been having a lot of rain, but her sister passed away in April, I think, in February, and her grave tombstone is not down yet. I think it's about 24 more of them that are standing up on the side of a building.
Probably 50.
Okay, and I wanted to bring that to the city council, to the city manager's attention, so that we can see if we can get that taken care of, because I can understand how she feels when her sister passed away, and you know, it seems like she's just not resting yet without that tombstone down, so I'm sure we'll take care of that. I'm gonna pass on her phone number onto the city manager office if I can. I'm sure they'll get back with you, Mary.
I think they'll pass.
They will, now.
Thank you.
And I would like to definitely thank... Before I do that, I'd like to tell Ms. Dugan that I'm sure the city manager will get back with you and take care of your issue with you, so they'll give you a call. I'd like to thank the NAACP for giving me the opportunity to even be a life member of the NAACP, considering 300 years of slavery in the United States, another 60 to 80 years of Jim Crow, and another probably 50 years of get out of here or go. And we see a horizon, you know, and just to think about some of the things African-Americans have been through through these times in America, even after building this place, you know, going off and fighting the wars, and then coming back and getting lynched. The gentleman, a couple of gentlemen that's coming back from the war got pulled off the bus with their army uniforms on and was lynched, because of the color of their skin. And he's the same people that helped get our freedom here in the United States today. You know, during the 4th of July, I had the opportunity to read Frederick Douglass's speech, and wow, it was amazing, you know, for this guy who had been what he had been through, his father being a slave, and him being a representative of the United States government, and telling them how he felt about the 4th of July, considering the fact that when the Constitution was drawn up, that they said that he was only 4/5th of a man at the time. You know, and for us to still be able to accomplish some of the things we have done in the United States and do it humbly, even though some of the things that we've been through, and some of our families have been through with racial injustice and all that, it still makes me feel good to be part of the United States and to be part of the NAACP to make sure that these things don't continue. Thank you very much for allowing me to be a member.
Councilmember Milne? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, we do seem to show up at some of the same things, so I will just say that the food giveaway was a very, very special event to attend, and see how so many groups come together to make it work. Groups of young people, members of Autumn's Fraternal Organization or Sorority, and volunteers like the mayor and myself, and it all just comes together. Everybody sees what needs doing, and it gets done. A lot of times, we think of volunteer opportunities, and you don't quite know where you fit in, but it can be as simple as you push the broom to get the debris out of the way so the forklift truck can drive in with the food. And all the little pieces work. So, volunteer opportunities come up, take one, see what happens, I think you'll enjoy it. On the 4th of July, I was the guest of the Saginaw Area Fireworks Committee over on the island. I hadn't attended there before, and I was informed that at one of their earlier board meetings this year, they received a check from the city for over $3,000. That's from the income tax checkoff box where you can donate to the fireworks. I donated my entire refund this year, and I want to say, I think by next year, the citizens and taxpayers, we could hit 5,000. So I think that's a good goal to aim for for next year. And they got this just a couple of weeks before the fireworks at their board meeting, so I'd like to see us boost that effort. The Light Up the City walks have begun, and I've seen very great attendance at those. Those are really bringing people out. And in particular, other local agencies and groups see the Light Up the City walks as a great outreach opportunity. They can come out and show that they're interested in the community they're in, and they join these walks, and everybody gets to talk to everybody on them. It's about the people on the walks, the people in the houses when you're passing out the light bulbs, so that is, well, just growing every year, and it's a fun experience every year to be out there. And there's also always a healthy snack to go with the pizza, so we're not just having pizza at the beginning. And those are my comments this evening.
Thank you. As you've heard from my fellow council members, there's a lot of wonderful things happening in Saginaw. There's a couple more I do want to mention. The African-American Cultural Festival is coming up in August. The Hoyt Park has hosted on June 28th and 30th another youth baseball tournament with teams and families from all over Michigan coming into Saginaw by the thousands, and the Hoyt Park will be host to another 28 teams coming up over the next several weeks of youth baseball for... See if I can find that, there we go. For girls and boys ages 4 to 15, a youth baseball league, and the schedule is available. Anyone who'd like to get hold of that, I'm sure we can get that to you. It is available also from the Friends of Hoyt Park. They are having coach pitch teams for as young as five, T-ball, majors division, minors division, and I think that's pretty notable. They do invite people to come down and watch, and I think that would be a great opportunity to see some of the youth in our community have some good activities to do, some recreational activities to do. I want to thank you, President Pruitt, for coming today and giving us, telling us about this recognition of our council member, fellow councilmember Balls, and congratulations, Councilman Ball. That's quite an achievement, so it's well-earned, I'm sure, and we appreciate all you do for both NAACP and the city of Saginaw. I'm gonna... Those of you who haven't had a chance to see, this is part of the Saginaw's new marketing strategy for... Is in conjunction with the Redevelopment Ready Cities. Certification received just a week ago. It states, "We build..." We are Saginaw, we build community, and some of the information will say, "We build things like opportunity," or "We build excitement, we build strength." This is an opportunity for all of us to tell the world about our community, and that we're ready and willing to invite people in, to come as business people, to come as residents, to come as guests, or visitors, or tourists. It's a great theme, and we're very proud to be presenting it, and I think our manager will talk a little bit more about it today. Thank you. Madam President?
Thank you, Mayor. We are now at reports from the manager.
Thank you. So first, I'd mention that when items are brought to council, many times, they have been addressed by staff already, so sometimes we may not follow up after a council meeting. I'll mention, sometimes they haven't been followed up on, and then in that case, we will follow up. We can only follow the ordinances when it comes to a lot of things like licenses and fees. Council passes the ordinances, council approves the fees, and we follow those rules as they're passed, so that's what we communicate, and typically, the office that handles those will communicate those issues, provide any ordinances or references at that time. With that, we have a few items I wanted to update you on. I've received some questions about the legislation related to the Downtown Development Authority, some of the requirements. They did have informational session on Tuesday, June 25th. The legislation requires two a year, so they will have another one later on this year. If you wanted to attend that and did get a chance to attend it, we'll likely have that prior to the regular DDA meeting, and we'll let you know when we're having those meetings, so that if you're interested in seeing what's going on or receiving the information, you're aware of when that is going to happen. The Saginaw Police Department now has a fifth K-9 officer. Officer Justin McGregor was promoted to K-9 officer, and he will be getting his dogs soon. And also, the city police department on July 1st went to 24/7 coverage at Covenant Hospital. That's part of the contract that was... We started that a year ago. Council approved that initial contract a year ago, and we added, well, Covenant added two more positions that you approved a few meetings ago, and those officers started on... So the hospital has city police officers working in the area 24/7 now, and that's... I think their staff is happy about that and pleased with the service that the police department has provided them. If you recall, council also approved our Public Act 202 plan some time ago for pensions and OPEB costs, and a lot of times, people think that the state passes these things and doesn't really follow up. I'll let you know that I did meet with the State of Michigan Community Engagement Finance Division last week, so they are looking at those plans and reviewing them, and they want to make sure that we're following what we said we would do to make sure we're complying with that public act. So that all goes into how we're trying to build up our fund balance and allocate those additional funds to OPEB and pension costs. We also have... I'll be meeting tomorrow with a representative from the 2020 census, so we'll do what we can to assist with that. I think in 2010, we provided space at City Hall and some other assistance, so we'll continue to do that. I'm sure I'll see what additional things they may want help for, and if there's maybe some things that council members can assist with as well, I'll pass that on to you all. I'm sure encouragement to complete the forms is one of the biggest things that they'd like us to pass on to community members. That's gonna impact a lot of things for the city, impacts federal aid, which is one of the biggest things. So we'll want to make sure we do encourage the responses to that. A number of council members do know Beth Church, our Assistant HR Director, so I wanted to read something that Dennis Jordan sent out. She briefly mentioned it when she did an update to council during the budget process, but after 22 years of dedicated service for the city of Saginaw, Beth has decided to retire. Beth hired to the Personnel Department in September 1997. At that time, she has helped the city and the department as the interim Human Resources Manager, and the last seven years as the Assistant Director of Human Resources. Beth has always demonstrated the highest level of professionalism and integrity while carrying out her duties, managing the entire recruitment process for the city of Saginaw. Beth also served many years as the Secretary for the Police and Fire Pension Board. Beth has been a wonderful employee to be associated with, and will miss her positive, can-do attitude that she's brought with her every day to the office. If council members want to stop by and wish Beth good luck on her retirement, please do so. This week, her last day is Wednesday. So, we congratulate her and wish her luck on that. And as a few council members said, the city of Saginaw did achieve the Redevelopment Ready Community Certification, and that, I think, is a good program by the MEDC that outlines best practices for development, and had a number of steps, so again, Yolanda Jones and her staff and Saginaw Future worked to complete that. And I think we've already put a lot of things in place that were recommended through that program, as well as our place plans, like the form-based zoning that we passed. That was part of the place plans, and also fits nicely with Redevelopment Ready Communities, the Business Development tab on our website, additional website development. And another one of the items in Redevelopment Ready is a marketing campaign. So our goal is to reach out to city stakeholders that believe Saginaw is better than it was five, 10, 15 years ago or more, and we want people to recognize the positive action. So we noticed that perception is a big issue. Reality may be different than perception, so we wanted to develop a messaging strategy while acknowledging the strategic challenge and telling the story of Saginaw today and of the future. We don't want to hide from bad news, but we think that needs to be balanced with believability and credibility and optimism and excitement in the city. So that was the genesis of the This is Saginaw, We Build campaign, and Yolanda and her team and our marketing partners at AMPM did develop a video that those who attended saw, but we want to play that tonight as well to give anyone who hasn't seen it an opportunity to see that, and it did send a link out to it so that you could share it with other people in the community. So with that, we'll have Matt start the video.
This is Saginaw. We build. We built billions of homes that expanded America's heartland. We built the crankshaves and transmissions that powered America's cars. We built the steering systems that guided to greatness. We built the firepower that helped defeat the envy of freedom. We built a community that was the envy of the nation, and we built an economy that was the envy of the world. More than once, because we haven't always had it easy. Like in many cities in America, things haven't always gone our way. We've been beaten, we've been bullied, we've lost jobs, we've lost people. We've been swept aside by a changing economy and a changing world. And we've always come back, because that which has not killed us has built us stronger, tougher, more resilient. It's built a town that will always bounce back, bigger and better. It's built people, knowing that the only way from the bottom to the top is to build. It's built people who know that the only way from the bottom to the top is to build. So we're building. We're building better healthcare for much of our region. We're building better engines in one of the world's largest aluminum factories. We build the motion controls on the aircraft of today and the cars of tomorrow. We're building new markets for Michigan farmers. We're building the tools to create the next generation of automation. And we're building the control systems that operate. And we're building the one thing that makes us always come back. We're building opportunity. And we're ready to help you build yours. This is Saginaw. We build opportunity.
So that's the first part of, of the campaign. And if you recall, um, council approved a three-year contract with AMPM. So they're going to create additional content and Yolanda and her team and Vicky Davis in my office will continue working with them. We also want to make sure that, um, that our message is consistent. So we encourage groups to utilize that. If you know groups that are interested in using that, as the mayor said, it can be, "We build excitement, we build his..." Whatever, um, the group is associated with. "We build entertainment," I think is another one that we talked about. We can make that, um, marketing logo available. So just have them contact the city manager's office. And we just want to make sure it's consistent. So we're, we're not putting it out on the website. But if it's something that is a great community program, we can share that and, and lend that, um, marketing logo out to other groups so that our, um, our message looks consistent. You'll notice that it is already consistent. We, we utilize the same color scheme as Riverfront Saginaw, Saginaw Future. So we're trying to, um, make it so that our message is universal between those groups. So I think that's a, a good job. And again, Yolanda's been our key person with city staff. I'm working in with that. Her and, um, Matt Chutnik, SGTV, Jeff Klopsick in Technical Services, and Vicky Davis, I think, have been some of the primary people working on the, the marketing campaign. So I think they've done a really good job. And really, it doesn't fit in any of the job descriptions, but they've taken on that work. So it's, it's appreciated. And you'll also have noticed that one of the people in the video is Zach Branigan from SOBC. And he's here tonight as well. I believe one of the council members asked for an update on some of the work they've been doing. They've been a great partner with the city and the County Land Bank. So with that, I'll ask Zach to come up front and, uh, give him some time to provide counsel and update. If you have any questions about their work, I'm sure Zach can answer it.
Absolutely, all right. Uh, thank you, Mr. City Manager, I appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm going to open by showing you a little movie. They, um, I've, I've already mentioned this joke a couple of times, but you either have the option of watching me talk at you for 10 minutes or watching a video of me talking at you for 10 minutes. But the, uh, the video is also going to have a lot of footage and instruction and some, uh, some things that are going to kind of illustrate where we are right now in the community and what's going on. And hopefully we'll sort of tell the tale of the last year. Some of you are very familiar with us and some of you are not. If you are not, and for members of the audience, that might not be...
Everybody out there.
No problem. The Saginaw Basin Land Conservancy is a regional conservation environmental nonprofit. We were founded in 1997. And although our office is in Bay City, I would say the predominance of our work is actually here in Saginaw. But we also work throughout a 22-county watershed, which is the entire watershed of the Saginaw Bay. So quite a big chunk of the state of Michigan. We have 6,000 acres of land that are under permanent land protection, but we really put, uh, the vast majority of our resources behind community stewardship projects like the Pollinator Project or if you're familiar with the Janet H Nash Riverfront Preserve, we constructed that in 2007. So we have a wide variety of partners, from the City of Saginaw to the Land Bank, to Saginaw Future and others, all the way down to, um, you know, mom and pop organizations and, and companies and people around town. And as my colleague and, uh, friend Ted Lind is going to tell you a little bit later, we've been working with a lot of, uh, neighborhood groups and organizations around the community. But I'm going to let the video do a little bit of the talking. Then we'll give you a couple of details, then we'll take any questions you have. So this is about 10 minutes, but I hope it'll provide a lot of info.
You guys have been in this neighborhood all kinds of ages so far.
Yeah, so it feels good that it will be done and, you know, really help out the neighborhood and, you know, everything.
It was probably, uh, seven years ago or so when we really started looking at where we were working and the type of work we were doing. You know, shortly after I started here, that we started asking ourselves a question. Is the work that we're doing affecting the most people possible? Our mission was quality of life in the Saginaw Bay watershed. It's a pretty broad topic. And actually, the work that we're doing is incredibly important that we continue to do, which is large track conservation, conservation easement, protecting habitat or wildlife, providing recreational open space, and all of those things. But a focus towards where the real deep needs of the region were in terms of land use was, um, something that we really had to kind of hone in on. And we just started to ask questions of the people that we were working with, the communities that we serve. We just thought, you know, what could we be doing more? What are we capable of doing? And how could we be applying our skills and our trade, you know, in a, in a populated area context? And from that was born projects like the Janet H Nash Riverfront Reserve, Pollinator Project, Michigan Shore Trails, Discovery Reserve, the, the Goldson Natural Area in Bay City. A wide collection of projects, you know, really can you remember that line? Thank you.
My name's Anna Harcy, I'm a Saginaw native. So I really love working for the company and helping out my community. I go to school at University of Michigan West, for wildlife biology. And hopefully one day I'd love to work with large carnivores, prefer blue wolves. So that's kind of what I want to do.
Well, my name's Logan Meyer, I'm 21. I go to school at Delta College studying art. My name's Logan Elliott, I live in Midland, but I, uh, I'm in Saginaw a lot. So, uh, I knew Ted before and told me about this really cool opportunity. So I thought I'd try it and see.
My name is Richard Ginn, and this is my second year with Saginaw Basin Land Conservancy. This is amazing for you.
Hey, hi, I'm Logan. I'm an intern here at the SBLC. Going to Michigan State, I'm a major in student outreach rep.
I'll show you just a little bit of what we're dealing with in some of these lots. This here, this is, uh, water, you can see the old cell serve over. Across the street there, you can see there's a seed crew. There's our crew back here. And this is a big mess. Unfortunately, a lot of this stuff is along the fence line here. Hey, look over here. And you can kind of get an impression of what we're coming across sometimes. This is all up and down the fence line back here. And, uh, yeah, it's a big old mess. There's a lot of plastic here. Let me get a little bit closer and see what's on this stuff. You know, in a very agreeable way, I'd like to say that the Pollinator Project is an inch deep and a mile wide. So it is a, a, a low-level investment to a wide, uh, area. So, you know, we're working in big neighborhoods, lots of vacant land, many, many lots, hundreds, literally 1,500 lots across the city of Saginaw. And we've been working with, um, you know, a critical mass in this neighborhood and that neighborhood. Trying to turn the tide, uh, nonstructural white in those areas. So we do that, of course, by removing woody vegetation, pulling trash off the site, spraying and killing all the weeds and then replacing it with flowers. You know, basically what we do with ground flower. You know, ground, ground covers with flowers, wildflowers that are beneficial to pollinators. And that particular project, what it does is it gives meaning to those properties. It, it puts a program on those properties. You know, where maybe there was one house left on a block and all the other houses have been demolished and nobody lives there anymore. You ended up with this, uh, situation where, where the person that lived in that house was completely isolated. And by adding program to those lots, you know, we've really, I think, made a difference in connection with a lot of people in a meaningful way. We've put them back on the map. Really couldn't be more pleased with how this particular lot came in. This is on, uh, Carey Street, the South Water Treatment Plant here in Saginaw. You can see that, uh, the early bloom is, uh, really, really exceptional. Uh, we found that there was an incredible appetite from both the philanthropic community and the business and general population communities. So developing funds to do these projects was, I certainly wouldn't characterize it as easy. But I would definitely say that there was an appetite to do this kind of work in the region. And given our skill set in stewarding land, you know, dealing with restoration projects, things like that, came naturally to us. So, um, it's been a fruitful series of partnerships that we've been able to build. Janet H Nash is an incredible project that we're, um, happy to be done with, but incredibly proud of having done, uh, that project. It's a, it's a several acre site right on the Saginaw River, essentially across the river from downtown. And it was a parking lot, but it was a dilapidated parking lot in need of, of a lot of investment. You know, light poles falling over, concrete mess all broken up. The short story is that we removed about 6,000 cubic yards of material from that site. So, um, a parking lot, there was actually another parking lot underneath the parking lot. So two parking lots. And, um, you know, all of the metal and the infrastructure, everything was torn out of there. And we replaced it with 6,000 yards of clean fill. So, um, you know, clay soils, uh, clay and then also, you know, better soils and then compost, that was all amended. Plan with wildflowers, we added a trail. Um, you know, you can see in some of the aerial views from this here that, boy, you know, after just a couple of seasons, it has really grown in nice. And now it's a sort of a living outdoor classroom for SASSO. The SASSO community has really embraced it. And, um, it was the first section of, kind of, improved rail trail on that side of the river. So, um, we believe that it's a precursor to many good things, uh, many good things to come.
I hear a light pulsing through the solid ground. Between this splintered concrete where the sprouting weeds struggle should claim the barren earth that had once dominated the frontier of Manifit. They look towards the sun, hoping to capture a moment of heat to last them through the night. Even the street lamps don't reheat like they used to. When the sun rises, the cool space stagnant, but cast a shadow towards us like dark slender fingers reaching. When the ground is tilled, there's something more potent to feel that soaks deep down into the soil, nourishing it in preparation for a seeding that will swing into fruition at autumn's wake. The growing roots intertwine and lock, embody the community and its influence on the preservation of the nature. Thank you very much.
At the end of the day, I mean, everything that we're doing is about people. It'd be really easy to kind of take the high view of conservation and then look at it on a landscape scale or to elevate, uh, nature and wildlife landscapes, you know, above people. But, um, you know, we really believe in building kind of the champion community of tomorrow, the eco-champion community of tomorrow, by, you know, connecting people with the places in their community, giving them an opportunity to get out, uh, you know, into nature to experience the outdoors. I, I'm sick and tired, and I've said it for years, sick and tired of people saying, "I love the outdoors, I go out north all the time." You know, we want people to, to explore and enjoy and have adventures, you know, here at home in our backyard. Because the more people that get outside and use our trails and use our rivers and streams and lakes, uh, that enjoy our wooded areas and our wetlands, that experience wildlife, the more people around here that do that, the more people that are going to give a damn when push comes to shove and these properties need to be conserved and protected and they need to be improved or we need to, um, you know, keep them free of contaminants, free of litter and trash and debris, and to set aside those special places that we can all enjoy. And that's really what our urban work and our, our connecting with the community here and basically in Saginaw in particular, to the Pollinator Project and to Janet H, that's what this is all about. It is about connecting people with nature. It is about elevating those landscapes to the benefit of everyone, including, you know, the natural world. And, um, yeah, we're, we're just very proud to be here and we're, we're excited to see what comes next.
Uh, thank you for, uh, for watching through that. I just thought that that would give you like a really broad picture of everything we've been doing, because I only get to come here once every year and a half or two years or so. So that's sort of what's going on. Uh, this is Ted Lind. Ted is our Director of Community Conservation. So since the last time I've been here, we were able to add Ted's position. And Ted more or less works full-time in Saginaw, essentially on all of our Saginaw initiatives and projects, other sort of community-based projects elsewhere. But I mean, the 90% plus of Ted's time is invested here. So if you see our trucks out on the, on the ground in the community, chances are Ted is not far away, along with our local crew. A couple of things that, uh, that I wanted to just hit on and then Ted's going to talk just for a couple of minutes about some of our community partnerships. Our, um, a couple of other things that we're up to. The Pollinator Project, we're maybe roughly two-thirds of the way done with our 1,500 lot commitment. A lot of you know the statistic that the Land Bank owns about 3,000 truly vacant lots inside the city limits. And we're working on about half of those. So 1,500 lots get that Pollinator Project treatment. The majority of those Pollinator Project lots now are not getting the tall mix like you saw in the one image in the video. They're actually getting something that grows much, much lower or more revised and updated mix for tighter urban areas is a lower growing mix, so it doesn't get quite as tall, which keeps those wide-open views and the neighbors prefer that. So we shifted that. Probably the last time I came and talked to you, we, uh, we had made that adjustment. Couple other things, uh, some of you have mentioned Ojibwe Island. We, uh, worked with the city, the county and the community foundation to play a role in assisting, uh, removing all the invasive vegetation and scrubby brush and everything from around the island as part of that improvement project. So we're real proud of where we are with that. It's nearly done, but the high-water conditions prevented us from finishing, uh, the work on the south side of the ditch that's along the road there. But, um, that's all that's left. Uh, we did a lot of work out there. So a lot of things going on in Saginaw. And I'm going to turn it over to Ted a little bit. He can give you a couple of more recent specifics. Mentioned a couple of our partners. We have so many people to thank and everything for what we do, what we're able to do. You know Gary being here. We've had a really great time working with Gary and I think Ted's going to tell you a little bit of that story. So I'm going to turn it over to him.
Yeah, so thank you. You know, it's been a, been a great year, uh, working in the city. We've, like, uh, you saw in the video, we've got, uh, five young people from the city that work with us. One of them is in high school, attends Arthur Hill. The others are college-age students. Couple of them are, uh, at Delta, a couple of them are, uh, local universities. But it's, it's been a great collection of people that we've brought together. And I think the story of this year is, is the community partnerships. You know, meeting people like Gary and getting involved with Houghton Jones and helping them take care of a, a problem block in their neighborhood. You know, activating partners like Dow. We have a series of volunteer days where we have volunteers of Dow and, uh, from Dow in groups of 50 that are coming out with us, six different times between now and the end of the year. So, um, you know, when you put 50 people to work on one block, you'd be, you're able to get a lot of work done. So, um, we've had students from SVSU, we've had Next Year, we've had Consumers Energy. You know, that's, that's one of the key things that allows us to do this work. know, that's one of the key things that allows us to do this work. A lot of people, you know, there's a lot of great ideas for things that can happen in the city, but a lot of those things don't happen with trash and debris on the vacant property. So step one, you know, whether we plant pollinator plots or any of the other things, is activating partners to get those, to get the land in a state where more positive things can happen. We just finished a series of spring planting, and now we're kind of shifting gears into continued litter cleaning up, and then we'll knock down some of the taller weeds here soon. And we're also going to do a round of fall planting as well this year soon to allow that seed to stay on the ground through the winter and then hopefully bloom in the spring. I can't say that every single lot looks perfect, but I can tell you that they definitely look better after they leave than before we start. So thank you for your support, and we're happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions? Councilmember Bell.
Yes, Ted, you might be the best one to ask this to. Are you having any problems with neighbors or community groups perhaps mowing something, especially the old tall pattern where they've lost track of the fact it's a pollinator plot?
Yeah, so that does happen in some areas, but, you know, it's, in our view, it's not a problem, because in many cases, the lot that they're mowing is something that was never being maintained before. And if us planting wildflowers on that lot is what gets somebody to start taking care of it, you know, in our book, that's still a win, so that's okay. If they decide to ever stop mowing it, the wildflowers are what's going to grow back up, so that's okay.
Yeah, sure. Are you familiar with our lot at State and Hill? That thing has been through hell. That lot has been mowed, you know, inadvertently and advertently. It has been, we had decided to convert it to the low mix, and so we sprayed it, but the mix has taken hold there so stringently that even with spraying weed killer, it did not stop the wildflowers from coming back when it was mowing ceased there. And if we just drove by it on the way here, it looks amazing. It's like, it is in full bloom, it is just, it looks like a, you know, an incredible wildflower garden over there. So it's a very strong, resilient mix of plants that's in there. And so it's totally okay if people want to mow it. I mean, if they do, I wouldn't invite people to mow all the tall mix lots. The low mix lots actually benefit from regular mowing, so if people are next to one of those and they want to start mowing, but as Ted had mentioned, there's a lot of circumstances where we clean up lots on a street and all of a sudden, people just start kind of mowing a little wider and taking care of it. That's okay. Our objective is not the flowers, the flowers are a means to an end. Our objective is to try to elevate the landscape and help the people in the communities. It's really a sort of an equity project more than anything.
I wanted to pass along also, community comments I'm getting back, people who, for whatever reason, hadn't driven by the Janet Nash Park at the right time of year. I'm literally getting wow comments on the mix of the plants there. The bloom this year was just fantastic.
Yeah. The other thing with, you know, with these species, they sometimes take, you know, a few seasons to really take hold. So, you know, that was 2017, the initial seed. We brush-mowed that at the end of 2017 growing season, we brush-mowed it again at the end of 2018, so that continues to spread that seed out and just helps it come in a little thicker every season.
Yeah, and the, that mix that's on that lot is the same mix that the tall mix lots in the city get, so it is the exact same mix. So we're actually hopeful that some of these lots that are coming in really good this year, again, they were 2017 lots, so one of the things that people need to do is just kind of wait and see, because these are meant to be deep-rooted, wild plants that are native to the landscape, and that they take a little while to establish, but once they do, they're very resilient. But yeah, Janet Nash, it almost took us by surprise at how well it's really come in this year.
Any other questions?
Not a question, but just a comment to say thank you for what you're doing. I know you've done a lot of work over in the Houghton-Jones area, my neighborhood, the Cathedral District, and especially on the Atwater area and Felon. I'd like to encourage people that when you see them come in and you see the stuff disappear, to just remember the city does have a convenience station, so a lot of times you'll see something come back that we have to go and get, which is kind of unfortunate, but thank you for everything you've done there. Janet Nash Park, Councilman John was just talking about seeing it from the road. I actually do a lot of biking in the city, and I rode through it on my bicycle. Somebody has this microphone here. But I rode through on my bike, and just to kind of go through there, and I took some photographs, and just to see, to be right down there in with the flowers was really kind of amazing. And one of the photographs I put up online, somebody said could be frameable. The city is welcome to use it if they want to. Vicky, I can talk to you afterwards. She's gotten some other stuff from me too, but just thanks for everything that you're doing. It really is making an impact.
Thank you very much. Yeah, the Pollinator Project in Janet Nash, I will say, has actually shed some very positive attention towards the city, and it's not just us, it's a very broad coalition of people that make the Pollinator Project worth, you know, are able to be done. But, I mean, we've spent time dealing with people from Cleveland, Detroit, Flint, even Boston and further afield. There's an exhibition in New York where they're going to be talking about cities like Saginaw, and they want to highlight the Pollinator Project. I mean, it's one of those things, it's been bizarre, the people that have been calling us and finding us online and learning about it, and then there's a very tight-knit group of professionals that deal with, like, you know, sort of post-industrial communities and vacant land issues, and there's been a lot of interest in this particular treatment. As I'd said in the video, it's kind of a mile-wide, inch-deep sort of triage treatment, and our intention is to continue in the city for the duration, for the long term, working with the land bank and other partners to continue to try to elevate those landscapes, get more of them into private hands. We're developing something that's similar to sort of an advanced side lot program where we are going to try to develop resources to incentivize people to purchase the lot next to them by tailoring it to their specifications. So if you had a vacant lot next to you and you wanted to have it be an extension of your lawn, then we'll plant lawn there if you, you know, if you meet all the criteria and all that. There's a long way to go, you know, there's some regulatory things to go and a lot of fundraising to go as usual. You know, we're in constant mode for that, but we have, we don't have enough time for me to say thank you to the overwhelming number of volunteers and people. But in particular, the business community inside the city of Saginaw has been immense, about a third of the budget comes from them. And also, the First Word Community Center and Houghton-Jones as well, and Mr. Dawkins deserve extra special praise for, you know, kind of elevating our role in the community. But Rob Brown and the people at First Word Community Center and the DNR Summer Youth Employment Program, incredible, we couldn't do it without them. So the city of Saginaw and the community of Saginaw have responded in such a powerful way that we just, it's overwhelming. So it's our great honor to do this work.
I just have thanks, that's all I have, every time you come here. It's probably one of the best relationships that I've developed since being our council, was going out with you, talking to neighbors in the neighborhood, letting them know what you guys were doing, and this work is so important. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Told us have faith, give it a couple of years, it'll improve, and it has improved. You guys are just relentless. There's not a time where I have picked up the phone and asked Zach a question, needed anything, where he has not got back with me within probably five, 10 minutes. So I just want to say thank you for the work that you do, you and your wife, your whole team. I mean, you guys are all extremely highly educated individuals that could go anywhere in the country, anywhere in the world really, but you stay here. You're not even from here, but you have such a big heart for our people. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Geez, Glenn, thanks.
Anyone else?
Difference, it makes a difference.
Anyone else?
Let me add my thank you to you, Zach and Ted both, for everything you guys do and everything Saginaw Basin Land Conservancy does for not only the city, but the entire state.
Thank you, yeah. Feel free to stop by, yeah.
So thank you, Zach. And Zach and his staff do a great job with business relationships and cultivating that to get funds donated to be able to do these projects. You see the end result like Janet Nash Park, but I'll tell you that before they put a shovel in the ground is years of work, especially in that case. So they stick with those things and work with us and the land bank and other organizations, so we appreciate the work that they do. And with that, that concludes the management update.
Mayor, we are now at the consent agenda.
Thank you. The agenda has been available at City Hall, on the city website, and on SGTV channel 191. Are there any exceptions to the consent agenda to be noted by the clerk?
Exception three.
Three? Okay, number three. Any other exceptions? Any other exceptions? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to proceed with the remaining items to approve. So it's been moved and supported. Are there any discussion concerning the remaining items other than number three? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. All right. Any opposed? Carrie, thank you.
Item number three is approved, the introduction of the proposed amendments to the Council Rules of Order of the city of Saginaw.
Councilmember.
So my question, yeah, my question is maybe just for clarification on why under Section Six, number nine is being removed.
That can be easily answered, I believe. Count, Madam Attorney?
That's the language with regard to public comment?
Yes.
Because we do post our Committee of the Whole meetings as public meetings, and the public's welcome to attend, as, under the Open Meetings Act, even though you're not deliberating to any decisions as a committee of the whole, it is best to have public comment available.
And the reason I'm wondering about it, because it's also allowable. So with taking it completely out, that means that we would not allow any public individuals to be invited to speak or address an issue, so.
No, I think it's the opposite of that, I think, is what the intent is, is that correct?
So number nine is public input will be granted while the council will not be granted while councils convene in the Committee of the Whole unless the person is invited by council to address the committee. So the proposal is to take that completely out.
Yes, so that public comment can be presented upon contact to the city clerk in advance. It'll just be normal rules. Yeah, just normal public comment will now be allowed at committees of the whole.
Right, under the current rules, we don't have citizen participation time where citizens can sign up. It's only if you're recognized by council, so this will change it so that citizens can contact the clerk's office and sign up to speak at the committee of the whole.
Basically opens up the opportunity for people to contact ahead of time.
I just wanted clarification, because it was being stripped out completely, so.
It doesn't preclude other citizens or members of the public from attending at council invitation under management update.
Sure, okay, just want a clarification. I move for acceptance of consent agenda, item number three.
Is there a second? It's been moved in seconds. Is there any further discussion regarding item number three on the consent agenda? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? It is Carrie, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. That takes us to boards, commission, and committee reports.
Thank you. Are there any reports from our city boards or commission? Any reports? Any reports? Hearing none, next item.
We are now at appointment of board and commission members.
And there are four items. Are there any exceptions to the four items of appointments? Any exceptions? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve all four items.
So moved.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That is Carrie.
Mayor, we are now at miscellaneous business.
Is there any other business to be brought before the council?
I just want to do a follow-up, because the emergency rules did come out, and I saw some communication on it, so I just want to make sure that we're staying abroad and moving forward with it. And then also to see where we are with the results of the survey from our residents.
Mr. Manager, I think you can address the survey issue first, as well as the fact that we are, we will be looking further at the rules.
Yeah, the technical services director is at a conference this week, so when he gets back, we'll go over the results of the survey, he and I will, and we'll get that to council. It is closed, so we have completed, I think it's probably off the website. The city attorney did send an update regarding the rules. So, did you want to add something?
I have all 64 pages, in fact, they're in my bag right now. I plan on reviewing them for the course of the next couple of days, and anything that's of importance at a municipal level, I'll of course provide a summary on the rules. I think for the most part are going to mainly deal with how the state regulates things at their level. I do know that just on a quick review, the state did create four new areas of licenses that weren't contemplated in the statute itself, so that's thrown some interesting irons into the fire, if you will. So there's a lot of new information to review over the next couple of days.
If I remember correctly, someone, we did receive in our emails a copy of the rules, is that correct?
There's a link to the rules, correct.
Pardon me?
There's a link.
So every member has an opportunity to review all the rules themselves on your tablet. Councilmember Royston.
And I'm glad that Councilwoman Schuser brought this up, because if she didn't, I was going to bring it up under miscellaneous business today, because the rules did come out, and I did start to read them myself, trying to, and this is around the recreational piece, though, that I want to make that known too. So the rules, because that's where the municipality's been kind of in, wondering what to do, because there's not been really any good guidance on that. And so I just want to let the public know that with the rules being released, and from what I understand that's out there, is the state of Michigan is trying to give the cities a six-month window, and then the state would start issuing their licenses November 1st.
Well, it would be less than six months. The state currently says that they intend to start taking applications as soon as November 1st. They have to by December 6th, but with the issuance of the emergency rules, it's a 90-day waiting period, so they could effectively actually start taking out applications as soon as that goes happening.
Right, and that's for the recreational?
For adult use, yes.
Councilman Balls?
Yes, Mr. Manager, I was listening to your comments when he was asking about telling the citizens that you may get back with them about some of the issues that they have. I know some of the department heads are responsible for some duties, but all the time they don't get taken care of properly, so sometimes the citizens come in to complain to make sure that it do get done. I just hope maybe we could reply, because sometimes things just don't go where they should be going. I mean, I know Mr. Donald been calling certain departments, and they had not got back with her. And, you know, as far as some of the citizens may have some issues with taxes or what have you, and it may just not be right. And sometimes, you know, they come here to try to get those issues taken care of, so I hope that if you don't get any response, I would like to know so I can relay that message back to them, you know, that maybe they did respond or didn't respond, or it was final and there's nothing else you can do.
Yep, yep, we always, I always check on them, so I get with the department heads to see what the status is and what was communicated. So it's not always something that's been dealt with, because maybe it went to someone in the department that maybe didn't get back with them. So it always goes to the department head, and then they follow up on it and see where it is. Some of them, I do get notified up before the meeting, so I know we've communicated, but we always follow up on all of them to make sure that something does get communicated or has been.
All right, thank you. Any other miscellaneous business?
Yeah, just a note, I'm going to do mobile coffee hours if anybody wants to join me. I'm doing it again this year, hopping on the Starz bus with my cooler full of ice water. You want to join me? I'll be doing it from eight to 11 this coming Monday and Wednesday, so.
That's not coffee.
It's not coffee. Hey, it'll work.
Coffee hour with water.
I bet you they appreciate that water.
Probably so.
Council, can you give me excuse some work to help you out with that?
If you can. Love for you to join. Whenever you're available, the Starz bus runs, the hours have expanded, so whenever you're available, I would love to go out there with you.
All right, and make sure you pass on the word via email.
We build opportunity. That's what we'll be talking about.
Pass on that email to all councilmembers. That's right. Any other, Councilman Royston?
Yeah, one thing I forgot to bring up, I wanted to during our comments earlier, is there was kind of a theme here. You always hear a lot of people doing stuff in the city, and One Week One Street had their event this year. And if you follow them on Facebook and just see the stuff that they did, just big applause for that group for what they do, huge impact there too, so just want to make sure I call it out.
That's a good point. Even former Mayor Dennis Browning is out working at that, so it's a tremendous, tremendous benefit for the city. Okay, any, anything else? Yes, Mayor Proton.
Councilman Balls, you're slipping. You normally keep us up on One Week One Street.
Well, I don't want to, you know, take thunder or any responsibility, but I, by me being a board member, want to give credit, and we donate $10,000 a year to One Week One Street, and I don't want to keep on signing, but we're more than happy to help out with One Week One Street. We donate $10,000 a year, and some of our employees go out there and help out, so.
I'm saying you normally tell us when it is so that we are ready.
I won't forget next year.
Thank you so much.
Good to hear. Okay, anything else? Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn? Move? Support? Any discussion? All in favor?